I'd like to lead in just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the roll call?
Counsel Lambert.
Present.
Counsel Roderick.
Here.
Counsel Ruda.
Present.
Counsel Durfee.
Here.
Counsel Bowlin.
Here.
Counsel Lennon.
Present.
Counsel Costa.
Here.
All present.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the following: approval of the minutes from December 8, 2008, regular council meeting; approval of minutes from October 27, 2008, regular council meeting; Counsels Lambert, Lennon, and Roderick abstained prior to election; receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions: Conservation Commission, Library Board of Trustees, Planning Board of Appeals, Waste Water Management II, Zoning Board II, Arts Commission, Open Space Commission, and Planning Board II; correspondence received and filed received from Town Treasurer Philip Di Mattei regarding swearing-in; received from Interlocal Trust Annual Dinner Meeting, January 22, 2009; received from City of Warwick Resolution relating to Pilgrim High School; received from Weaver's Cove regarding September and October reports; joint petition by Verizon, New England, and Narragansett Electric proposed poll; and response from Steve Belucci, Director of the DPW; received from Senator Louis De Palmer regarding possible meeting; received from Tiverton Budget Committee regarding '09 reduction in state aid previously distributed; received from James Amoranti's regarding response to open meeting complaint against counsel; received from Interlocal Trust regarding seminar on January 31, '09; received from RIDOT regarding economic stimulus package plan; request by Sandy Witt Farms to advertise for public hearing on stop sign. And that's the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to remove item 3J for further discussion.
Are there any other removals?
We'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of 3J.
So moved. Is that a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, minus 3J. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, well now we'll move to 3J.
My question there, Mr. President, was that at the workshop last Thursday, I believe it was, as well as our last council meeting, we talked about having Mr. Gonzala talk to all the department heads to come up with a list of potential projects that might benefit from the proposed federal stimulus program. And I just thought that since 3J represents a list of, a very short list, I might add, of state DOT projects, this might be a good time to ask Mr. Gonzala if he's had a chance to receive input from the various departments.
We also have it on our agenda later, under Councilman Items, to discuss stimulus.
Then, either way, your pleasure, Mr. President, whether to do this now.
We do have it under a request by Mr. Lambert to discuss proposals of any state or federal stimulus programs and projects, and I think that would be a better time rather than tie it in with that state letter we received.
Okay, we'll slide it there.
So then we'll make a motion to receive the letter under 3J.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Moving on, we have a public hearing on abandonment, a street abandonment of five certain areas of Kennedy Drive, Presidential Drive, Eisenhower Drive, and Cornell Road pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 2462.
President, both of you can please discuss these items.
Uh, hmm. No, I would assume probably somewhere where, on the side here, so that the audience and the council can view it. I think we have a smaller map.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Stephen Hare. I'm representing Church Community Housing Corporation as contract owner of the apostle that is under question. Joseph Bossum is the owner. Mr. Bossum is present. And we have filed an application for a comprehensive permit before the Tiverton Planning Board. The project has received master plan and preliminary plan approval and is scheduled for a hearing on final plan approval later this week before the planning board. As the project is a affordable housing, market rate housing, mixed-use project, a large portion of the property will be conserved for open space purposes, and, in fact, the area of the streets abandonment that is being requested, which results from a old subdivision for lots and streets which were not completed or developed, is part of the prime agricultural lands and is in the area primarily that will be subject to the conservation easement for agricultural and open space uses. We are asking that the portions of the streets as identified on the plan, that is a portion of Kennedy, Eisenhower, Presidential, and Cornell. Cornell is actually currently at a width of over 100 feet, and we are requesting that the width be reduced to 78 feet. You'll notice on the plan that the portion of Cornell closest to Bogomash is actually less than 78 feet in width. As part of the project, currently Cornell is paved almost down to Kennedy, and as part of the project, we'll be continuing the pavement of about 22 feet down to what will be a new street in the subdivision. All of the land on both sides of these streets which are being requested to be abandoned is owned by Joseph Bossum and will be incorporated within the project. The house lots that are shown on the plan will be abandoned as well, so that this will remain, again, part of the agricultural and passive recreation area for the project. If the council has any questions, we do have Mr. Smith here who can answer them, as well as Bridget Ryan from Church Community Housing Corporation and Mr. Bossum.
Is there anyone in, anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this matter? One at a time, please.
My name is Chris Souza from Brayton Road pertaining to Cornell Road. So here, so what part of abandonment is going to take place from where the road is right now? Is it going to affect the road at all?
No, it's not. If you look at the plan, there'll be a 78-foot width that will continue to be a public right-of-way. And in fact, as the project goes forward, and we'll be required to post a bond to assure the completion, we'll actually be improving and putting a paved surface in on the property.
I can just answer that. A portion of the roadway will be relocated approximately where the entrance to the subdivision will occur.
Yeah, does that go down this far? This is bond? Where Bossum's bond is located?
Beyond the bond.
What, it's going to go beyond the bond? Is that what's going to be moved?
Yes. The road will be continued down to this point, and then it'll be tied back in over here. We will maintain the path, the hallway. We're not going to block anything off. And we're going to move this section from our entrance up to where there's pavement on Cornell Road now.
That's it. Thank you. This map doesn't show, but Cornell Road also extends in from King Road.
Yes, it does.
Okay. That's not shown on this, is it? Does it stop? Is there a stoppage between Cornell Road and where you're showing this on this map?
There's a cart path or gravel right-of-way, laneway that goes from, came all the way through here. You had a jeep, you could make, you could go from one.
I was curious as to where you're showing your end here on Cornell Road. How far is that from the paved portion coming in from King Road?
Bear with me one second, I can tell you that.
Okay. Oh, it's, okay. I just.
I've got approximately 3,000 feet.
Okay.
It's a long ways.
Okay.
My name is Brian Sanford. I'd just like to ask you.
Give your address, please.
Who owns, Cynthia Ravenel.
Okay.
Who owns Cornell Road?
Cornell Road, I believe, is an ancient right-of-way.
It belongs to who?
I believe it's owned by the town.
Belongs to the town? So tonight, what we're here, here to ask the town to give this land?
We're asking for a portion of Cornell.
You're asking the town to give it?
Yes.
Because it actually belongs to the town?
I believe that's the town.
Is that correct?
Well, I think, well, I'm not, I'm not so sure about that. Here we go. We're getting back to, we're getting back to our incipiently dedicated land. When someone divided this parcel and created, let's say, the lots here, you know, showing on Presidential.
That didn't include Cornell Road, though.
No, no. What I'm saying is that that road.
The only question I have is who owns that road?
Well, I'm not, I'm not so sure it's owned by the town. It may have been plotted to be a road, which means the land is set aside for a road. If the town no longer feels that a road is going to go there, they can abandon that use of that.
But at this time, right now, we don't know who owns the road?
I, I'm not sure.
Does anyone on the council know who owns it?
The town owns the road. Yeah, he, it's a public road. Six years ago, I hired a lawyer, and when he established that, it was the town road. It was Mr. Wright Valery was the lawyer that I hired, and he came from one of these people and he established it was a town road.
What portion of it was the town road? The paved?
The whole road. Okay, the whole thing. Did the Bossum try to block off the road with a truck, and he tried to take hold of the land on both sides? So I had to hire a lawyer. He had to get him to move his truck, and they established it was. And at the same time, you gave DeMello a house lot at the corner of Cornell Road on the north end, and you established it was a town road, and you approved this house lot.
Mr. Teitz, do you have any information on the?
My understanding is that this is, that this is one of those many roads that it's owned by the town. The town has never accepted it as far as for the obligation to maintain or improve it. But as you said, it was dedicated as a town road. In fact, given the, given the width, which appears to be about 10 rods wide.
Eight rods.
Eight rods, rather. I suspect it's probably quite an ancient road, going back farther than we've researched. But to my knowledge, it is owned by the town, although we have not accepted the maintenance responsibilities for it. And of course, that's the purpose here tonight. That's why we have this public hearing.
Would it be possible to do a little research on it and find out who does own it before we decide if we're going to do it?
Well, no, I'm saying, the town does own the land, the road, and the purpose here tonight.
And now you're positive of that, right?
I'm fairly positive, and it really doesn't matter if the town.
Because I own land, no, that abuts Cornell Road.
Okay. Do you own land that abuts Cornell Road?
Yes, I do.
On the east?
Yes.
Of the, of the, not, not.
Abuts Cornell Road.
But, but not on the section that's going to be abandoned?
No, on Cornell Road.
Okay, right.
But it might affect me getting in from one end to the other.
Right. And that's what the council is here today to determine, whether this, right now, the roadway bed is 132 feet wide. That's.
But we have determined that it is a town road.
Yes. And they've asked, basically, half of that. Half of the width is still going to be there. Normal roads in this area would be 50 feet wide for a right-of-way. This is still going to be.
78.
78 feet wide. So it's going to be considerably wider. But that's exactly it, and that's why the question's to make sure that you're not having, you know, if you say, if your land was zoned for industrial and you were going to have a trucking terminal, and you said you're bringing in 18-wheelers, then that'd be something that you should bring up and tell the council now.
Well, it's possible, because I own an auto salvage yard, and it's on part of that land.
Well, you need to make, you need to say these things now.
Well, that's what I'm here for.
This is your chance.
I'd like to know who owns the road before I.
The town owns the road, for your purposes here tonight.
The town owns the road.
If the town doesn't own the road, it doesn't matter, because we can't give away something we don't own. But to the extent that the town has an ownership interest, and I'm sure it does have a significant ownership interest in it, even if not the sole interest, that's what we're here discussing tonight, whether the town should abandon that interest in half of the width of the road.
In half of the width.
Approximately half of the width.
And the other thing I would like to say is that this is, because this is part of the plan before the Tiverton Planning Board, whatever the ownership issue is, this will confirm that, a few things, that the 78-foot section is definitely dedicated to the town and would be accepted by the town.
No, 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 please, please, don't make a representation that will be accepted by the town. Until it's improved.
Well, if, if the planning board.
Okay.
I'm sorry. And that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
If the planning board approves it, and if church buys it, because that's part of the conditions as well. But, but essentially, there'll be, if the project goes forward with the road bond that's put in place, if the planning board gives its final approval, those are all ifs, the owner of the property will be, who owns the land on both sides, because if, in fact, if the town doesn't own it, Mr. Bossum owns it, subject to rights of others.
Yes.
And that's all I'm saying, is that that issue will go away in terms of whether or not the town has any ownership interest in the road.
It wouldn't, couldn't be possible that the state could own that road?
I don't believe so, no.
But you don't believe so, but it could be possible.
Anything's possible, but.
Years back, maybe you don't have records.
No, I mean, my, my knowledge of the ancient roadways in Tiverton, together with my review of the materials on this particular petition, indicate to me that this is owned by the town of Tiverton.
The town of Tiverton owns the road.
It's not a state road.
All right, I guess you've answered my question then. Thank you.
Okay, so you're talking about improving this road. The red section you have there is going to be improved all the way down to this point here, almost down to Ash?
With the, with the labeled portions of Cornell that will be abandoned, that's, that's where there'll be a turnaround here, cul-de-sac, and it'll be approved from here back to the, where it's indicated end of existing pavement. And then there'll be a slight improvement of the gravel to the south of that, so that it ties into the existing roadway. We're not going to, we're not going to improve the entire length of Cornell down to the end of Mr. Bossum's property, but we are going to improve up to this general area here. It would be asphalt to here, with a slight, slight portion will be gravelled just south of that.
And where is the cul-de-sac planned for?
Cul-de-sac is planned for right in, right in here. That's why the angular portion is here, because that will actually be the fillet or the grounding part of the cul-de-sac, turnaround of the cul-de-sac. I can show that to you better on the subdivision plan, if that helps.
Probably, because I'm saying, if, if there's a cul-de-sac there, cul-de-sac has no access.
Cul-de-sac was put for turnaround for emergency vehicles and traffic. It does tie into the road network for the, for the subdivision.
Just because the easement, or that what remains is 78 feet, it won't be paved 78 feet?
And there'll be no blockage at the end of the cul-de-sac? Traffic will be able to move right through the cul-de-sac? Well, that was my question.
Are we saying the integrity of Cornell Road will be true from King Road to Bogomash Road?
No.
It will improve from the end of the existing pavement on Cornell.
No, there'll be 3,000 feet that's still unimproved on the King Road side. And that extends, that extends beyond the Bossum property as well.
This is Bogomash Road here. This is Cornell Road here. This is where that cul-de-sac would be, and then it ties into the road network for the, for the subdivision, for the project. And then it also ties into Bogomash Road here, so we have a continuous network through the roadway.
How much of that will be gravelled beyond the cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac, there, cul-de-sac, and it would tie.
It'll be gravelled beyond the cul-de-sac.
What length of the road would be?
It's not a path.
One second.
Yeah, yeah, I really feel offended that you call it a path. I've been going through there for 35 years.
Okay, all right. I'm going to take my car down, okay? I, okay, I'm sorry.
How much, how much of that road is going to be gravelled past the approximate distance? Past the cul-de-sac? That was your question?
Approximately 20, 240 feet, 250 feet.
Excuse me, to what width? What would the width of the be, that, of the gravel part along that 240 feet?
I think basically the match what's there, I believe, was 14 feet, 12, 14 feet.
Andrew Donnie, I live on 733 Cornell Road, which is technically the last house on the Bogomash side. My driveway is past the paved end of Cornell Road. When we put in our house six years ago, we had to come put up a bond for the town to approve it. We had to put a crushed gravel or some sort of surfaced area to allow emergency vehicles access to our driveway and a turnaround and exit back on Cornell Road. I'm just curious, what's the purpose of the cul-de-sac? Is it to serve the new development, or is it to serve traffic on Cornell Road? Will Cornell Road become an access road for the development, or?
It's to serve.
Yes, yes, it will. The answer to your question is yes, it will.
So it will be, it will, I mean, is it going to increase the use of Cornell Road?
Yes, yes, it will.
Okay.
Can I speak for a second?
Yes.
Just addressing that cul-de-sac, Cornell Road is a public road that DPW plows. It was one of my.
Up to.
Up, up to the existing end now. It is going to be extended, and the issue I had would be turning our plows around at the end, so we wouldn't be going in to the private subdivision, which is being proposed before you. So that's the issue with the cul-de-sac. There's also one at the other end on Roosevelt. Same situation. It's a way for us to turn our plows around without backing into private property.
I just, Joseph Souza, 49 Hancock Street. I'm just wondering, how much footage would the town be giving up? Is it?
Well, the town, it's, it's 50, 54 feet is what is being abandoned or asked to be abandoned on Cornell Road.
If this is property, we're assuming that the town owns and has value. I'm just wondering why we're giving it away? If it has some value, and we usually sell town property, there should be some value there that. If I can clarify that, the, the extra width of Cornell that's being abandoned is to be used for drainage to support the. For the development of Cornell Road. For the subdivision, not for the town? Well, for the most part, it's for Cornell. We've got, we've got a series of other detention basins and swales that. Who's going to have the deed for that? Who's going to own that property once we abandon it? It's going to be deeded to this division, or is it going to be still deeded to the town? No, it'll be deeded to Mr. Bossum or the church community. Therefore, we're giving up land. That's, that's my only point, is there's some value to this land, we shouldn't just give it away. The town should get something for the value of this land, particularly now.
It's, it's still a public hearing. This is open to the public. Please step up and.
Joe Bossum, maybe I can help you. In fact, in, when I bought the property.
Joe, Joe, give us your address, please.
Oh, 580 Cornell.
And you use the microphone.
580 Cornell. I have papers at home from procedures of the town council in 1965, when Gaimond, Arthur Gaimond, the previous owner, widened the entrance to the road at where it intersects with Bogomash, as they gave him additional width on Cornell Road that he, that the road didn't have before. I have the proceedings of that whole thing from 1965, all the discussions and the minutes from that town meeting. So evidently, the road was smaller at one time, and they widened it because he gave the town more road, more entrance. It was a swap of land back in 1965. I didn't, you know, I don't know, actually, before my time, so I just thought I'd add that to the mix.
So it's 68,000 feet?
Yeah, Chris Spencer, the town planner, I just wanted to clarify for some of the people here, what's being, or what's being asked to be abandoned on Cornell is not the road itself, but the right, excuse me, the right-of-way. And in our town standards, typical local road, which this would classify, be classified as one, is about 20 feet, and typically, the right-of-way that we require for a new one is 50 feet. So the amount of land there that's set aside for a right-of-way is well beyond what the town really needs for that type of road. So I don't know that there would be much use for that land beyond what the right-of-way, a 50-foot right-of-way is. And I don't know that there would be, certainly wouldn't create a buildable lot with that extra land after the road is constructed. So this, the way this is being done and being asked by the planning board was to create a secondary means of access and egress to the development, and that, that road will remain public and will be maintained by DPW. And again, the idea of the cul-de-sac, which is not a true cul-de-sac, because it's a turnaround, but there's still, you can get beyond it and get into the development from it. But the idea there was really just a terminus to the public portion of the road, so DPW or fire could, could turn around and get back out without going into the pub, private section of the development, so.
Peter Monis, 83, Captain Circle. I'd like to finish the procedure of abandoning town property, especially a road. The solicitor can help out here and finish it. But I think to complete the statement is that the butters on either side of the road have the rights to, to the land as, after the town abandons the property, correct? The town does not sell the land to, give, doesn't sell the land back to the buta, it's given back to the butters.
Well, the town, it is possible. It does not have to be done for free. There are some, I mean, if you go to Providence and they abandon it, you're going to pay for it. In most communities, it's abandoned, there isn't a charge. And it does split at the center of, the doctrine is at the center of the roadway. So if there were separate owners on either side, and you were going to abandon the whole width of the roadway, then the property owners on either side would take it to the center line. In this case here, some of the land is, roads that are talked to be abandoned are completely landlocked by one owner. And then with the one we were just talking about on Cornell, it's only on the side where the property, the subject property is, it would all go on that side. It doesn't, it would, if it were being abandoned more than halfway, then that would be a different story. But it's less than halfway across.
My question is, so there's a possibility that abandoned property could be so returned to the owner? I thought it was only one way. I thought it was going back.
No, no, the town could impose, the town could impose it as a condition of an abandonment. This town has, has not.
So now to my basic question, what I really want to cover is, I was wondering if the advertisement is incomplete or was done wrong? My understanding that the Kennedy Drive, which runs from Cornell, I guess, all the way down to Roosevelt, which is a paper road right now, and unimproved, which is going to be improved, to a public road with a turnaround, or further down, I believe. Roosevelt will be improved. But the section between Roosevelt, which you just circled, and right up to the red area, I was under the impression, and I believe, that's supposed to be abandoned, because that area, that road's going to be changed, the name's going to be changed to Muse Way from Kennedy, and also, it's going to become a private way. Kennedy, and also, it's going to become a private way.
It's not going to become a private road. It's a part of the paper street, we are improving it, but we're not asking that the town abandon it.
Muse Way now?
Well, we have suggested renaming that section of Kennedy Drive so there will be no confusion for fire or other public safety purposes. The portion of Kennedy Drive that is, runs between Cornell and Presidential and beyond for the next lot is going to continue to be in existence as a public road. So from a planning purpose perspective, we didn't want to have two different sections of improved road with two names that you couldn't get between. So we're renaming, with the approval of the planning board and fire department, the section of the new improved Kennedy, which is in back of the town ballfields, to Muse Way. But that will, we're paying for the, we would be paying for the improvements, but...
So there'd still be, coming off Cornell, there'd still be 410 feet of Kennedy on the, between Cornell and Presidential down to where it ends?
Correct.
And then you're going to change the other side from Truman and Roosevelt, where it comes in another 168 feet to Muse Way?
We're going to change the name and improve it because it's currently unimproved. It's currently open space, but we'll be putting the road and infrastructure in.
And it also has to be built to public standards for a connective road, such as?
It will be built to whatever standards the planning board imposes. And even with the private roads within the system, those are all subject to approval and bonding.
That's not our issue before this evening. The issue before this evening has nothing to do with the planning board's responsibility. It has to do strictly with the abandonment of these three roads.
Because I was under the impression that that was going to be abandoned. And so, that section of Roosevelt now, that's going to be a public road, it's going to have a turnaround there too? Because we need a turnaround for the vehicles? No?
If this is going to be a public road now, approved, we need a turnaround over here? Like, over here and over here? You're not showing that now?
The maintenance of that is going to be agreed between the, you provide by the developer and then these...
Yes, that's right. If it's a public road, it's going to be maintained by the town. And one of the requirements that the town has imposed is no turnaround. So we'll have to follow this up later on.
No, no, no. Peter, you're talking two issues. One issue here, before the council tonight, is the abandonment of three pieces of road.
I agree with you.
Anything else here is not on our table, our purview. It is before the planning board with the subdivision.
I agree with you. That's why I said, I thought there was an error in this advertisement or mission, because I'm under the impression that Kennedy was supposed to be abandoned between Roosevelt and Truman. That's my point. Thank you.
Jean Levecq, 738 Cornell Road. My question is, what will be the width rather of Kennedy? The portion that's going to be retained?
Kennedy's a 50-foot wide right-of-way, it will remain 50.
And will it be...
Paved.
Paved or something, or opened up?
No.
It won't be? What's it good for then, if it's not going to be opened up?
It was requested that be retained, not be abandoned during some earlier hearings by some of the public.
Why, I being one of them? But why is that going to be cleaned up? So that vehicles will come up Cornell, up to where we are, by mistake, could take a left on Kennedy and come down whatever the next street is that's going to be open? Yeah, Presidential.
Presidential is improved. It wasn't the intent to improve this section. Put a turnaround down here so that vehicles did come up, they could turn around and go back out.
In other words, this is not going to be opened up?
That's going to be abandoned, right.
Is this going to be opened up?
No, that will remain a painted street.
It's kind of useless then. You know, people come up here, they turn around in my yard because they find they turned the wrong way. And this is why I petitioned to have Kennedy remain there.
And we didn't change it.
However, there's still going to turn around in my yard because this isn't going to be opened up so they can make a U-turn or take a left turn on Presidential to get out of it.
But this will be improved to here, they'll be able to turn around down here.
Well, they won't do that. They'll turn around right where they turn around. That shouldn't be opened up.
I think some of these matters, some of these matters, that some of your concerns and some of the other concerns here, really, you need to go to the planning board meetings because that is where it will be determined if other areas of this plan need to be rectified for your concerns about turnarounds and so forth. Tonight's meeting is really on the abandonment of those red sections of that plot there. And that's what we're here for. If the planning board, you know, wishes to entertain what they should do for turnarounds and other access points and so forth, I believe that matters for the planning board. I think our purview here tonight is strictly on the abandonment of these three streets or the sections of the streets. And what you want to see happen in the opening of Kennedy from Cornell down past Presidential is...
So that there would be a U-turn.
That's an issue.
You know, they headed the wrong way.
That's an issue that needs to be raised with the planning board to see if they think that's necessary for what they're doing in this subdivision.
Why are we having a turnaround way up here?
That's what I'm trying to say to you. This body is not the determining factor of where the turnaround's going to be, what needs to be for access to this subdivision. We're here tonight to talk about three roads that are paper streets or in existence in some form or fashion that these people are wishing to abandon in order to do this subdivision. And those turnarounds you're talking about do not pertain to this abandonment.
Well, it's hard to vote yes or no to abandon certain streets when we don't know what's going to happen. In other words, we're caught in between here.
Well, I think...
We can't vote on a decision.
Well, it's the council that's going to make the decision on this, but your comments, like I say, I think where they need to be is, you need to follow this plan at the planning board. And when the planning board is discussing the subdivision Sandywood Farms, that's when you need to come and say, as a concerned resident living on, you know, Cornell Road or Presidential, that you see a problem here because of what happens now, and here's what you think they could do to improve that situation. But...
I'll do that. However, I still have another question.
Sure.
You said this will be the access to the development?
One of them, yes.
Main access is through Roosevelt.
And then what? Or they get to Roosevelt, then whether they go left or right, if you go at random.
Be new streets. Is there anyone else from the public?
Audrey Gladi, 195 Crandall Road. I just would like to know, how many acres does Mr. Bossum own for this development?
I don't know.
I believe it's about 180 acres, all told.
197.
197 acres, and he needs this additional small portion of Cornell Road? He can't do what he needs to do on his own property?
As Mr. Smith indicated, these are drainage features for Cornell Road. The width of Cornell Road is almost three times the standard width. And again, all of the property to the west side of Cornell Road would be transferred to the Tiverton Land Trust. And the section of the property, most of the area, the section of the property on the east side of Cornell Road will be subject to a conservation easement granted to Tiverton Land Trust by the developer.
So currently, Mr. Bossum owns both sides of Cornell Road?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but with 197 acres, why couldn't he do the drainage on his own property?
Again, I mean, the question is, is what is a reasonable, if the...
We wouldn't subject someone to developing a road 132 feet wide.
I understand that, but that's still town property that we as towns...
Well, I understand that, but the town doesn't really want to own much more than the easement on either side of a roadway because of the maintenance that's involved in doing that. Once the road's accepted... I understand that, but now it's going to be brought up to a standard... Well, no, but if you bring it up to a standard, which has to be done to do the development, then we're going to have a responsibility. And this is part of...
You don't need the development.
This is part of development within the town. We do this, this is, you know, when we do subdivisions, subdivisions get created and new roads get added to our road system, and that's part of what the development is. The roads get built, the roads get, the drainage gets put in, and it gets put to a town standard, and the town accepts that.
Correct, they don't have to...
But he is, when you talk about his own land, until a road goes in and gets improved to the town standard, even though it's dedicated for a road, it is really, you know, not, we have not taken...
Cornell Road on...
Come to the podium if you wish to continue the discussion, okay?
Cornell Road, unlike those other streets that he's asking for abandonment, is not a paper street. Cornell is a town road, not a paper street like the other roads that you're asking for abandonment on. And if he has 197 acres, that should be more than enough to do his development if it needs to be done. Otherwise, put his development somewhere else. I mean, we don't really want the projects in Tiverton as it is, which this development is going to be. But if he has 197 acres, I'm also a taxpayer in Tiverton. If he wants the property, he should have to buy it like the rest of us would have to do.
You were saying the road is how wide?
132 feet.
Is that eight rods?
It's 10 rods, eight rods.
Is it an eight-rodway?
It may have been part of...
An old proprietor's highway?
What's that?
Could be an old proprietor's highway?
It possibly could be based on its size.
All right, I'd just like to go on with this, being against any abandonment of the road, okay?
Thank you, yes. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to be heard? At this time, I'm going to open this up to questions and concerns of the council.
The only question I would have, and again, it's a learning curve for me, what use would the town ever have for this property that's being abandoned? I assume you could never make a house lot out of it, but what other purpose is there to this other than having a roadway? Have I missed something in some of the earlier issues about this development? It seems to me we have a piece of property that we don't want and can finally be maintained by someone and developed, and we have no use for it. And, you know, I understand that there are people opposed to the development, but just on this very narrow issue, what the heck are we going to do with these areas covered by red? There's no value to the township at all that I can see. And this is the purpose of an abandonment. I mean, I'd be happy to listen to your argument further, but I mean, I understand you're opposed to the development, but that doesn't, but on the narrow issue that we're faced with, it's what's better for this little strip of land here? Would we ever have a use and a value for it?
To continue, just please, come to the podium. I think if we're going to have a discussion, we're not going to have it from the back of the room, we're going to have people speaking to somebody at the podium.
Just to narrow my issue, I'm trying to find out what the purpose would be for the township to continue its ownership of the area that's covered in red? What would our purpose, what benefit would we have?
Probably why we would be against the abandonment is because we own land there, and we'd like to be able to access our land from either side, as we do now.
Disabandonment will not change that.
At the same width.
I thought that might be the issue, but I don't...
At the same width that it is.
But...
And you're looking for, to see why it would be useful for the town? It might be very useful, if you're going to put a development in there, to be able to come in from King Road side with emergency vehicles, police, fire, school buses. It's not that far. Why shut that side of the road off? Why not go right through? Be able to, the school buses, be able to get to the middle school. Fire truck from South Tiven would be able to access that road through King Road rather than having to go all the way around.
But you're not narrowing the road. After we make an abandonment, assuming we did...
You're not narrowing the road?
You're not narrowing the road as you continue it through the ruptured Bogomar Road. It's far narrower than the access to Cornell Road.
Well, according to the list it is, but if it's eight rods...
It's not eight rods.
Why is it narrow up there?
Previous subdivisions, I'm not sure what happened in the past that we were...
It was originally eight rods?
Probably was, yes.
And somewhere along the way, somebody missed it and somebody decided on that.
I don't know what happened. But we'll still maintain 78 feet, which is more than adequate for an arterial road, which would typically be 50 feet. That would be a main collector.
We're not proposing to narrow the traveled right-of-way. The width of the traveled right-of-way, which is 12 or 14 feet, is actually going to be wider in the area that we improve.
Like I said, I'm against abandoning it myself.
I understand you're only abandoning a portion of Cornell Road, a certain width of it, that it will still be a road that'll be accessed. Now, you're saying if the town doesn't have an interest in it, if it's going to be paved all the way to the cul-de-sac, that's going to continue to be town responsibility? I mean, what's the footage from where...
No, it's going to become town responsibility, it isn't now.
Well, I mean, what type of footage, you're talking from where the pavement ends now to the cul-de-sac? I mean, isn't that an additional cost burden on the town to maintain a road that doesn't really serve any purpose for the town?
Well, yes, it does. The town picks up the taxes from the development, and the taxes from the development, that's what you end up doing is plowing a road and providing services, you know, that go with that. That's really the trade-off.
But what's the footage from where the pavement ends to the cul-de-sac approximately?
Approximately 1,600 feet.
That there'll be no development on either side of that? I mean, there's never going to be any houses down there, it's not technically part of your development? It just seems like an awful lot of road to maintain for whose purpose?
We thought so too, but the planning board and the DPW felt that it was appropriate to have a second means of egress for the development because of the number of people that were...
And the developer is paying for those improvements.
Okay.
We're going to maintain it after.
Okay.
My name is Ray Holland. I'm an attorney here in Tiven, I represent Mr. Bossum. This gentleman right here asked a question about what good or what you could do with what's being abandoned. I believe that area is an R80 zone, which means you've got to have 80,000 square feet for a lot. If you look at what's being abandoned, it's 68,000 feet. So that for you, it's not really an issue because if you abandon it, or if you did anything with it, you'd only be creating a substandard lot under the zoning ordinance and you'd need a variance, which you would never get, unless you had some really good reason to create a lot that was 58 feet wide and X number of feet long. So as a result, there's nothing you can do with that lot that amounts to anything, you can't even create it. And by abandoning it, it does become taxable to the abutter who does get the property. So the town of Tiverton does get a benefit to this, as well as taking care of the roads in that neighborhood.
Is there any other public comment?
Just that it does enhance the value of the people that, the people that own the property that put that road, it enhances the value of their property, it enlarges their lot. So there is value to that property because the people who inherit that property could one day sell it or whatever.
Well, that's...
That land is owned by Mr. Bossum on both sides of the road.
And he's, that's right, it's being developed.
Well, the one side is being developed and the other side is a conservation easement. So, I mean, one side is not going to be developed, and one side is a project that is providing taxes to the town of Tiverton, it's a substantial project. I mean, that's the two issues we have.
Mr. President, if the abandonment enhances the property, then the taxes should go up on that piece of property if the assessment's on the job. I would make a motion... go up on that piece of property, if the assessors on the job. I would make a motion that we approve the abandonment of those, of that road, subject to final approval of the planning board of this whole project.
We're talking four roads here?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we do that, I have a question regarding the portion of Kennedy Drive that's going to be abandoned, which will become the new MUSE Way.
This portion's going to be abandoned, and I can show you on that.
Once again, is the, the property on the opposite side of that owned by Mr. Bassem also?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
This is the section that's going to be abandoned here. This is all going to become open space for the development. And this is the portion of Kennedy that will become MUSE Way. We didn't want to have Kennedy go to a point, stop, and then start over here, because it would tend to confuse emergency calls for fire, police, which side of Kennedy area on. So, we've changed the name. And that's, that's basically why, why we've done that.
I just spell Muse, by the way.
M-U-S-E.
Real Shakespeare.
I have one question. Mr. Smith, how far along Cornell, would you say was going to be improved beyond the abandonment? Is it going to go-
No, no, that, that beyond the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
250.
250.
And that's with gravel?
Yeah.
That's to the south, right?
14 V1.
It's going, basically, it's just going to be, it's going to be gravel, the way that it is now. But it's going to, it's going to, because that, that section of roadway tends to meanders through the right of way, and a portion of it tends to hug the easterly side, we're basically going to keep that down the center and then tie into the existing roadway that's there.
I, I do just want to mention too, that the planning board has submitted a memorandum and unanimous approval of the request, and the developer has been working with the Tiverton Public Library and with Recreation Committee in terms of making sure that the project blends in with the other town uses of the surrounding properties.
Any other, any other issues from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this hearing. And now-
I would make a motion that we, we abandon that road, subject to final approval by the planning board of the entire project.
There's a motion on the floor to abandon the portions of roads listed, subject to final approval of the project by the planning board. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me check with the clerk.
Yeah.
I believe Thursday night, this is supposed to be meeting tonight. I believe Tuesday night, Thursday night.
Okay, the council now sitting as a board of licensing commissioners, take up the following request. Mr. Andres Lopez, Newburgh Enterprises LLC, requesting a petroleum storage license for the gas station located at 1837 Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Make a motion that we approve the license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
May I, on the question, Mr. President, is the, is the tank there currently licensed?
Do you mean the legal requirements mean they have to have the certification?
Yeah, I think so. When was it? Aren't those tanks, don't those tanks require an annual inspection, unless one conducted there? Is that meeting the legal requirement as well?
That's meeting the legal requirement, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're all in. Yeah, we're all over the favor. That was when Doc raised a question. Inferal Gas, 896 Fisher Road, requests approval, approval of annual renewal petroleum storage license.
Motion to accept, meeting all legal requirements.
We have a motion to approve, subject to meeting all legal requirements, been seconded. Discussion.
You know, we have no backup with regard to this. You know, no, that the-
This is a renewal, I believe.
It's just a late renewal.
It's a late renewal.
It's a late renewal.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Mr. President, on the next item three, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. The next item of business is Country View Estates, continued from the December 8th meeting, the annual renewal of manufactured home elderly community license.
Can I ask a question? Are both generators now in and working, tested and and working and so forth?
No. It said here that they are just waiting for Phil's to hook up the propane.
Councilor Costa, the, the generator at Blackboard Court is 100% in and operational and inspected. The generator at Cardinal Court was installed last Friday. It has the propane tank electrically all hooked up. I believe it's waiting for a delivery of propane, and then it has to be tested. But both generators are in, and to the best of my knowledge, only one hasn't been fired up yet.
Do you recommend approval of this?
Yes, I do.
It's your pleasure on the Country View, renewal of the license.
I would make a motion-
Motion to grant the renewal.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the renewal.
Yep. Second.
Second.
Been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Next order of business is the DPW requesting petroleum storage license.
Is there a conflict of interest here?
This is for the petroleum storage tanks at the DPW yard. They have been just currently tested. They passed all their inspections and all their tests. They're in good shape, and requesting a license for storage.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Mr. President, before we move on, could I raise one issue?
Yes.
And that is, in the short time I've been in the town council, you can't help but notice the number of, the amount of paperwork and the time and effort that must be going into these licenses and permits and fees. And I'm sure that some of this is required by state statute and state regulation. What I would like to suggest, however, is possibly to have the town administrator and the town clerk identify some of the licenses and permits and the like, that we might be able to issue over a period longer than one year. I mean, there are businesses in this town that have been here since I was a kid. You know they're not going anywhere. Is it possible, for example, with some of these licenses, to simply renew them every three years, every four years, every five years, instead of, I'm sure there has to be some expense involved in the paperwork, not only for the businesses, but once the paperwork hits the town clerk's office, there has to be some time and expense involved. So, I'd like to see if they could, you know, that's not a rush item, but to see if Mr. Goncalo and Mrs. Mello could put a list together of these type of licenses, where we could come up with a program if, if a business wanted to, if we give them the option of renewing their license for three years, for five years.
We might have to tell the state legislature. Want to speak to that, Mr.?
Yeah. These licenses are all set by state law at one year. The authority is delegated to the town. We, we do what we can, I mean, I know this, your, your very first meeting with all the licenses, we do what we can by lumping the ones that are just routine renewals all together, so you can just do one motion and take it that way. But it is required that they're one-year renewals. And then, in a way, you do need that, because you never know when you are going to have a problem. And this is the, this is the place where you have leverage. If you're going, if someone has a license, and there's a problem with the business, and you try to revoke or suspend their license, there are all sorts of due process compli, issues. We have to give them a show cause hearing and whatnot. This way, you've got them coming before you once a year anyway, so that if there are issues, you can bring it out in that form without having to have a formal show cause hearing.
I understand the argument. It seems to me it's still a tremendous waste of time, money, and effort.
We, one, one of the things that we've done before you attended here, we tried to do it, for example, to have this meeting all requirements and the inspections. We've set forth a policy that if, if someone's business was inspected within the last year for another license, it's still valid for this. So that- So that you don't have a situation where the fire chief inspects in the spring, and then has to come back in October to inspect the same license. We've said if it's been inspected within one year, then that inspection will carry forward. So, we, we have done what we can and tried to jiggle the timing of the various licenses around, so they're more orderly. But unfortunately, it's state law.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nancy, Nancy is pleased that you'd even raise it, because this is a lot of paper and-
Moving on to appointments and resignations, we have some interviews this evening, and I believe Mr. Van Air is here. Your interest is in the Harbor Master.
Yes, sir.
Any members of the council have any questions?
I'll open up with my standard one. Why are you interested in the position, and what would you bring to the position?
Well, first off, I'm interested in helping out with the town. One of the reasons I picked that is because of my extensive background in marine industry. I've been a commercial shell fisherman, a commercial lobsterman off of Georges Bank. I work presently during the summertime for Towboat US, towing broken-down vessels in Buzzards Bay, in Arrogance Bay. And I feel that I've got plenty of experience. I also, on my full-time job, on my day job, I should say, I'm a supervisor instrumentation and controls. I have a staff of 15 that works for me. I prepare reports, budgets. I tend to the crews, pre-job briefings, safety. So, I feel I've got a lot to offer and a lot to bring to the town.
Have you had a chance to, to read over the duties and responsibilities of the Harbor Master?
I've seen a small sheet, but I'm not sure of, of full-blown.
Just a follow-up question. You read our, our plan, our harbor plan for the town?
No, I have not. I have not presently, no.
You have three functions that you are currently involved in. That is, you, for example, with Dominion Energy, it's from September 83 to the present.
Right.
The rescue assistance is from May 05 to the present.
Right.
The Macon Marine from May 98 to the present.
That's correct.
You going to have time to be there?
The other two I plan on giving up, if I, foregoing those two, except for my full-time job, of course. I plan on foregoing the marine assistance towing, and also the, basically all it is is a charter business. I run some charters out of my, off of my boat once in a while, and that's it.
Are there any other questions?
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilors, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe Adam Cox is here.
Mr. President, I'd like to recuse myself from interviews on the juvenile hearing board.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Council questions? I believe you're here for a position on our, for any of you for the juvenile hearing board.
Right.
And I would, I would open by asking again, why, why you think you're qualified? What particular talents do you bring, would bring to the position?
Well, I'm a child and adolescent psychologist, and have been so for about a decade, and have spent most of my career working with kids who have been offenders in one way or another, and have often served as a consultant to the courts on juveniles who've committed capital crimes with respect to whether they should be tried as adults or juveniles. And I would understand that the kids that would come before the juvenile hearing board would in no way have committed offenses that are that serious. But I have a strong interest in helping the town develop programs and interventions that might provide a way for kids to make amends for wrongs that they have done, and at the same time, provide some kind of articulated system of consequences, so that kids in town have a little structure.
How long have you practiced with the-
Pardon?
How long have you practiced in Tiverton?
I opened my private practice in Tiverton in last March.
In last March?
Mm-hmm.
And where had you been before then? I don't-
Although I'm a Rhode Island native, I've prac, I, I have practiced psychology in Pennsylvania for 10 years prior to July of 2007.
Now, have you had a chance to review the details of the juvenile hearing board?
I've read the ordinance, which I think is the abbreviated version of that, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any comments on that ordinance that we passed?
It looks very straightforward to me, and, you know, it, I don't think that I have any question about what the, what the purpose of the ordinance or the purpose of the board is. And is, is it, it's my understanding, and I appreciate knowing, is it, this is a new board that you're just developing?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So, that's, that's particularly interesting. I guess, one of the things that I would add is that as someone who has worked with kids who have been assigned community service as, as a part of whatever kind of offense they've committed, I think that most people in my profession are somewhat surprised to discover that most kids enjoy community service, because the work component of it ends up being enjoyable to them. Being in some type of supervised work experience, where perhaps they're taught how to do something, or they get a chance to do something that has value and merit for their community, is not something that most kids object to. So, I think that, I think of that as a, as a very kind of positive thing, and a win-win situation for the town with respect to the kids, and, and the town perhaps getting some type of service from kids.
Mr. Cox, as, as a psychologist and, and working in town, do you feel that you might run into a conflict if, say, i.e. one of your patients, or is also-
I, I guess the possibility of that is, is always going to be the case, because it's a relatively small town. So, in that situation, I would have to recuse myself from making any kind of decision. One thing I should add is that although I have a, a private practice in Tiverton, because it's, it's near my home, and I enjoy doing some of that work, at this point in my career, I, I make my living primarily by writing books, and by traveling, and, and giving talks about these types of issues, quite, quite far all over the world, in fact. So, I don't think it's going to end up being a big conflict of interest for me. up being a big conflict of interest for me.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Joshua Mello is...
Good evening.
You applying for a position on Recreation Committee?
Yes, sir.
And I will ask my question. Why are you interested? And what do you think you would bring to the Recreation Commission beyond what you've put on your application form?
Okay. Well, I've always been, had an interest in the town, and I'm certainly interested in the parks and recreation as far as helping maintain it and develop specifically Bogomash Park. I grew up going to that park when I was a young child, not too long ago. And I just want to really help revitalize it and bring it back to where it used to be, and maybe even better than where it used to be.
Okay, thank you.
I must say, you have provided us a very, very good resume of one-year interest and backgrounds.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no other questions, thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else here?
No, we have one for that.
Okay, no problem. We'll get to you. I just had those people confirm to you.
Susan Anderson.
And this is...
Susan?
Susan.
Susan Anderson.
Okay. Historic Preservation Advisory Board.
I was, I'm going to deviate from my normal question, why are you interested and what do you bring. I was, I have to say, I was a little bit intrigued by the fact that you're an engineer and that you also have a certificate of interior design. And I have to say, I've worked with an awful lot of engineers over my business career. I think you're the first person I've ever encountered that has both an engineering degree and interior design. How does that play into historical preservation, if I might be curious?
Well, when I took the course at RISD, I was like the only one that really got the structural stuff. It was very easy for me to figure out what a load-bearing wall was.
So I presume that your engineering degree might be civil engineering?
No, actually, it's not. It's electrical. But you still have to take all that.
Yes.
But, yeah, currently, I'm taking a course right now at RISD on old house research.
Okay. Thank you.
I won't even ask my questions because I know of your interest, sort of legend in the town.
When you live in a historic district, you're passionate about it.
Yep.
Well, I see no other questions, so I'll say once again, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We have our other request for the Recreation Commission. Chris? And help me out and pronounce your last name.
Rome Line.
Okay.
And I'm going to, I noticed that in your application, you particularly focused on Grinnell Beach, Foglen. Is there some reason why you particularly mentioned those as opposed to the overall activity of the Recreation Commission?
I mean, I got involved in the new park that they're putting in up there on Bogomash. I've been working with getting the skateboard park designed and doing some fundraising. But when you look at this town, you look at a lot of coastal areas, we have some real gems in this town. It'd be nice to see them improved. Particularly, look at Grinnell's Beach, such a beautiful vantage point on the bay. Seems everyone parks all over. It's really kind of rundown. Coming from other areas, I have people come visit from all around the country, and they're just, they're amazed when they come around that turn and you look right down, the Saconnet. So, you know, anything I could do to improve, you know, those areas in particular because of the beach areas, I think they're the real gems of the town, as well as the other areas, the recreation areas like Bogomash, which is a big project coming up, hopefully.
I have no other questions, Mr. President.
You indicate that you're a business owner. Is it in town? And if so, what kind of a business is it?
I have a business in Fall River. It's a lighting manufacturer. Also do a lot of energy work with lighting fixtures.
Hope your business is progressing.
The energy part's good.
And no one have any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There anyone else here tonight for an interview?
Richard Bush.
Richard Bush, for the juvenile hearing board.
Yes.
Well, I need to recuse myself again.
Okay.
You know Mr. Costa?
Yes.
In that case, the whole town would have to recuse themselves.
Yes. This is not a good situation, right?
Mr. Bush, I just have a question. Since you're a correctional officer, where are you...
I work for the Rhode Island Department of Corrections, just over 18 years now, medium security. I do see the end result of bad behavior.
Are you presently president of the Tiverton Youth Soccer?
Yes.
And have been for, well, you've been a coach for eight-plus years.
Yes, I've been a coach, vice president for about a year, and president for about two and a half years.
And what age group are you working with?
We work primarily with four-year-olds on up to 17. So we pretty much, I come in contact with quite a bit of the youth in town.
I guess you do.
Yeah. That's the good part.
Did I hear that correctly, four years to 17 years?
Yes.
That's...
They start out at just before kindergarten right up until high school.
Yeah, it's just quite a...
Personally, I like the four and five-year-olds. They have the most fun.
Since that's the age of my grandchildren, I tend to enjoy watching them. It's quite interesting. Not much to do with soccer, but it's still interesting.
Anyone with any more questions?
No.
Richard, thank you for coming this evening.
You know, on our agenda is appointments and resignations. Now, we have, I think there's only one applicant for the library, Nancy?
Yes.
Maureen Morrow.
And we only have...
Contacted us.
No, but I think the point of the matter is we have one opening and one request. I think that's an easy one.
Yes, and I was...
What Ms. Durfee was referring to, so...
And I would also make the same point about the tree warden, Mr. Manchester.
Yes.
So I will make a motion that Maureen Morrow be appointed to the library board. And do we have the appropriate term that I can add to my motion?
But what's the term?
Term.
Oh, I don't, I can't remember.
Well, for the appropriate...
Term.
Term.
For the open seat.
For the open seat, that's very good.
And term. We have a motion to appoint Maureen Morrow to the library board of trustee. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to that. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
That's unanimous.
I will also make a motion that Mr. Manchester be appointed as the tree warden.
Back him.
Any discussion? Seeing none.
We could always get him back from Florida.
When he comes back, he'll find out.
Yeah.
He's appointed.
He gets for being absent.
That's right.
His presidency.
He should know better. We've done it to him before.
Mr. President, the library term is three years. Leanna's got the book, and of course, the tree warden is in.
Yes, all right. You will fill that in then as part of my motion.
How many do we have on the historic preservation?
I think we've only, is it a five-person board?
How many openings do we have on historic preservation?
We could do Susan Anderson.
Yes. I want to let it get away.
Yeah. I will make a motion that Susan Anderson be appointed to the historic...
Preservation Commission.
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? On some of these other ones, we have more than the number for the position, and we're going to be going over those. Okay, is that all on that? Okay, moving on to financial business. Town administrator requests transfer of funds.
I request the approval of the transfer of $10,000 from the clerk's recording expense account to the legal and zoning issues account.
I just want to make note, we realized later that the account number on that account, instead of 101-375 for legal zoning, is 105-375. I'll amend it in the...
We got better amended here.
Okay, request that the transfer of funds be from account 101-550 to 105-375.
And that was in the amount of...
$10,000.
They also amend the typing, that it reflects $10,000. There's an extra zero.
Could be $100,000. Of course, we don't have that amount either.
Well, the comma's in the right place.
There's an extra zero on the end.
I will, I'll make a motion that that transfer...
On our agenda.
On the agenda.
Oh, on the agenda. Oh, I see.
Yeah. That the transfer in the amount of $10,000 to the reflected accounts be made.
Oh, I see.
We have a motion in second for the transfer. We see no further discussion. All those in favor?
Request that a transfer be made from the personal services account of the treasurer for $8,500, and the personal services account from the town administrator, $25,000, for a total of $33,502, to account 105-539 litigation.
Is this largely due to the Bay Street litigation?
Absolutely. The interim.
I'm sorry, there's a correction on that number two. It's 105-359. We looked up the accounts.
359. Okay.
Now, the, I'm presuming that the treasurer has agreed to this transfer?
Yes.
And that there is enough money left to pay him for the rest of the year, so he is not coming back asking for money in a little while?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also with the town administrator.
I figured the administrator...
There's enough salary left.
I figured the administrator was in there.
Did the town administrator agree to this?
Yes, he did.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfers from account 214-100 to 105-359 in the amount of $8,500, from account 112-100 to account 105-539 in the amount of $25,000.
No, it's 359.
359.
Excuse me. To be changed.
Second the motion.
A motion made in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Synonymous. New business. Councilor Lambert, reduction of compensation for town council members.
I don't believe a lot of discussion is needed on this. For people in the audience, we make $2,400 a year serving on the town council. We're all aware of what the problems are statewide for the short haul, and there'll be problems here in Tiverton. We're probably, possibly, going to have less services. There's the possibility of increased taxes. There's the possibility of cutting wages for some of the employees. And despite the fact it may appear to be only token, well, that's what it is. It's a token reduction. But I think we have to take the lead. And what I'm suggesting is that we take a reduction in our compensation, perhaps something in the area of 15%, 20%. And that's what I'd like to put up for discussion. If we're going to ask people to make sacrifices in Tiverton, I think we have to take the lead tonight.
I would just keep the discussion going if it needs. I'd make a motion that for the current fiscal year, we reduce the, I'll call, well, it's really a stipend, but I'll call it the town council compensation by 15%.
Hey, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that part of an ordinance?
It is for the, when we get to the state, I wish to address that issue. I have some concerns about this. I would think that we would deal with, as we see the overall budget and what we have to do to meet the requirements of finding the money for this year, I think it should be part of an overall discussion. And the reason why I have concerns are these. You would not want, in this town, which is very diverse, people, you know, the money that we get is like a stipend. We don't have an expense account. The expenses that we have are fairly, you know, it helps paying for gas. It helps with a campaign. You want people to run for the town council who are diverse and who have, or not wealthy, because the town is diverse. We have some wealthy people. We have some people that are not so wealthy or not so affluent. And everybody has a right to run. And you try, people that have families, trying to educate their children, that little stipend that comes helps them do some things. I don't think we're at a point in our discussions about what we do with our budget to say that the council will take this action, because from an ethics standpoint, it will never come back. We can't vote to increase it. So I would be very cautious about reducing it. I know it's a good feeling. You know, we stand up here and say, if we're going to ask for sacrifice, we'll make some. But for the long... But for the long haul, for the town, I think we have to, it's a modest amount of money. I think, I'd like to see it tabled until we sort of take a look at the entire budget and see where we are. But I would not to, I would be very hesitant to do this until we see where we are and whether it's needed, because you never get it back. The ethics, we'd never have it. It's not a suspension, it's it, and we cannot sit here to restore it. So, I have some concerns.
Well, I would, I just want to make one comment. I was careful to make the motion that it would be a reduction for the current fiscal year only, keeping in mind that what's necessary for future years may be a different situation, wherever that may take us, good, bad, or indifferent.
But that, I think that's my point, is that the council cannot probably restore a pay increase because of ethics problems. We can't vote to increase our salaries.
But you're not voting to change the ordinance law in the salary. I think, I think maybe there's a way that there's, we can take some kind of an action to waive a portion. I mean, individually, you can take an action to, I guess, to waive or return a portion of your salary, and that doesn't change the fact of what the salary is. And maybe it can be done in that fashion.
Well, I think.
I mean, I don't.
I think going from that to augment what you're saying, then, I think if any individual would want to waive a portion of their, or return their stipend back to the town, that's a personal thing that one could certainly do.
Well, I'm just saying.
Rather than taking a blanket action on the whole stipend. As Louis says, it's an ethical question. Could you ever restore?
No, I agree. You can't change what the, you shouldn't change what the compensation is to the council, because you shouldn't restrict another council from something that's, you know, been placed there. So, if it's going to be done, I think it has to be done as some kind of a gesture that...
An individual could make.
Yeah, that, you know, to waive, you know, or to return a portion.
I would say that it might be legal for someone to write a personal letter to the Treasurer requesting that they be dropped from the payroll, or that their stipend be reduced, or whatever. It would be a personal matter between each of us and the Treasurer.
And I understand the arguments that Ms. Durfee has made, and they're well-taken. My concern, though, with the idea or a notion that it would be a personal gesture is, it's not going to be a personal gesture for people who work for the town. It's not going to be a personal gesture for people who take a cut in services or get their taxes increased. I would pick up on the suggestion that Mr. Leonard made, and that is have a set time. I mean, I understand what Ms. Durfee is saying, that we may look for a comprehensive plan. But realistically, we know with the shortfall that we have at the state level, that we know what we've been told will be the cuts in state aid. It isn't as though we're going to be surprised every month or two down the line. And I think we should at least send a message to the people in the town that, look, okay, we're going to start here. I don't care whether it's 5% or 10% or 15%. I think that we should take a cut that's mandatory and not a personal gesture.
You know, I would just as soon take a look at where we are, because you keep saying we're going to make the cuts in personnel salaries.
I said maybe, possibly.
Yeah, I, we have contract issues. Those people next year, under the governor's proposal, are going to be extremely hard hit. Their going to be, salaries are going to be capped, and they're going to be paying 25% in one year. I mean, it's not a phase in, boom. So, I think, I myself, these questions are very difficult. I understand where you are, but I also think we have to balance the long-term interests of this town. And the long-term interest in this town is not to confine this council or our seats to more affluent people in this town. And we need diversity, and that stipend, it's terribly modest, but it helps. Helps pay the gas. When you go to a conference, not only that, but we get a lot of requests to help other people. And it's sort of nice to have at least something. And I'm not saying, you may not need it, I may not need it. But I suspect there are people in this town, that makes a little bit of a difference. And I think, I think it's important we retain it. I'll be honest with you. That's not going to get us to where we need to be.
In support of Louise's comments, let me say that we've already set the pace. One of the tactics that's being suggested is freezing pays and so forth. Oh, my God, the council's stipend has been frozen for years and years and years. So, that doesn't set a precedent, a mode.
It's true what Louise says. Sometimes we're asked to donate to families who are less fortunate. So, it's through those types, through that type of stipend that allows that kind of gesture to happen. And, you know, in going to seminars, and I mean, Mrs. Black and I will go to the State House on several occasions, I mean, that's all mileage that, you know, it's, that's where those types of, then we have to pay for, we have to pay to go to a seminar or some kind of symposium. That's what the money is used towards.
No, I understand. That's why I'm not suggesting that we cut it out entirely.
But we could never restore it. Even if we did 5%, we can't go back next year and say, okay, now we'll restore the 5% to the, we can't, can't do it.
Furthermore, it's not our decision. It would be, you know.
To the town.
Yeah, but we can't.
I agree with, you know, with Mr. Lambert and his gesture. And I think it does set a good example, you know, for what may or may not happen in the future. But as I see Mr. Tights busy looking through the book, I think there are some legal questions that he is trying to ascertain some answers to. So, I think at this point in time, I think it's probably best if we tabled this issue until our next meeting.
I would, I would think so.
If we're going to table.
I'll go along with that.
But no, if we're going to table it to the next meeting, then.
Wait till the next one. I'm ready.
Let Mr. Tights at least look at that and come back with some suggestion as to how we may be able to accomplish it without the concerns of having this going away and leaving some other council with something, you know, less than what's there. I personally, it makes absolutely no difference to me. I do not count on it. You know, it is not, it is not part of my income stream that I rely on.
It doesn't augment the budget.
But, you know, I have no, I have no problem, and I think it can be done in terms of, you know, we've had people serve before who didn't accept. And I think that's probably going to be a better way to accomplish that. And I would have no problem, you know, in that sense, because it does not take it away from anybody else in the future. So, maybe, maybe that's another way we could rephrase that and find a way, but I'm not opposed to it. So, do we have a motion to table that till the next meeting?
I'll make a motion that we table it for our next meeting.
Oh, continue.
Just to be, yeah, continue.
Okay.
Continue.
To give our town solicitor time to research.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Opposed.
Who?
Me.
Oh, okay. Uh, Councilor Lambert.
The next agenda item is really just picking up on the proposal that Mr. Leonard made at the last meeting. And I just wanted, as I state in the explanation, I'm trying to renew and expand the discussion, essentially to serve as a wish list of proposals for any state or federal economic stimulus programs or projects. And what I'm suggesting and proposing is a list, a list of down-to-earth, practical suggestions that would come from the Town Council members, the Town Administrator, Town employees, anybody in town who has a good idea that might serve as a Tiverton program or a Tiverton project. For example, doing something about the old stone bridge, doing something about putting in curbing on Main Road, those type of programs, which I understand.
I believe the sewer commission already has some pretty close-to-shovel-ready projects that...
And the only other suggestion I had on that point was perhaps, with the new administration coming in in Washington, that we set a deadline. That is, we get a notice to everybody who's involved and ask that they come up with these lists within the next couple of weeks and submit them to the Town Clerk or submit them to the Town Administrator.
I think the Town Administrator should be soliciting every, you know, department as to projects that we could, you know, apply for the stimulus. And we should have that list as soon as possible, because I think when they get something off the ground, I think it's going to move pretty quickly.
You know, I thought in our prior discussion that what we had agreed is part of our goals, because we started off, let's have goals, and you said, wait a minute, we don't have any money to have goals, and somebody else interjected and said, but, we should be ready for the federal stimulus. And I thought as part of our goals, that that kind of discussion would, that would be where we'd flesh that out. In the meantime, as you read the minutes of the wastewater commission, they believe they could have three projects shovel-ready within a short period of time. Mr. Kendricks, who is here, and, uh, I don't want, I don't, you don't have to make a speech tonight, but I, probably just a confirmation that with some updating, that you probably would be in a position as one goal.
Yeah, Leroy Kendricks, I'm the Wastewater Management Commission Chairman. And basically, back in the early '80s, there were projects completely designed for sewers in various areas of North Tiverton. And those projects were never implemented, and so they are shovel-ready. There's three projects that the commission is putting on the list, as it were, which would add sewers to the, to North Tiverton. So, in the event, we submitted those projects to the Town Administrator, and as you see in your notes, and depending on what the stimulus package is, which no one knows right now, whether it's going to be a package that has loans, grants, whatever, depending on what it is, and that'll dictate if there's any money to go forward. If it's grants, then it kind of becomes a no-brainer. If it's a combination of grants and loans, now we got something to talk about. And if it's all loans, we probably don't have much to talk about. So, it's, no one in the country really knows what form it's going to take right now. But whatever form it takes, we're ready to take a look at it and evaluate it and make some recommendations to the council on what direction we need to go in. But the plans and specs do cover the areas of North Tiverton. They would have to be updated, because the plans are 28 years old. There are some, you know, sewer projects, sewers haven't changed much in that timeframe. Some materials have changed, so some plans and specs would have to be updated. But the idea that these projects can be shovel-ready and ready to bid in 120 days would not be an issue. So.
How far along were we on that proposals on the Stone Bridge? Because that was another project that we had done some, I guess, extensive work on, or in terms of coming up with some figures about what the repairs to that structure were going to be.
I would ask Chris Spencer to give us an update on that. He's the chairman of that committee.
I think, I think the design is all done, and we have all the specifications for that. I don't know what the bottom-line costs were, but that was for the improvement.
But that's a project, that's a project that's just about, or pretty close to shovel-ready, then.
That would be another one, yeah.
Okay.
And that is just work on the abutments?
On the abutments and some of the areas around there. But it doesn't include anything beyond that.
Beyond that area?
Right.
Okay, so it...
How long would it take you to get some?
Well, I'm just saying, if you.
No, no, I just.
To make that scope of the project, you know, a little bit bigger.
We could probably have it, probably not by the next council meeting, but the one after.
Could you, or could you make sure that you have him work on that project? Because I think that that's another one that I think could be important to the town. It was one that we didn't have the financing for.
Right, okay.
You know, we still have a grant outstanding for the Bulger Marsh Recreation Area, and...
Do you want to take that back?
I don't know. We got an extension till June, but that is something that we really should, you know, it was waiting the master plan, but, master plan is fine, but that is an error, something that we should...
Is Jack here tonight? I saw him here earlier. Did he leave?
Hello, sir.
Okay.
Is Gary back there?
Thank you. Gary Rose leave too?
I believe so.
Alex?
Mr. Chairman, I speak to him there?
Sure, come to the mic.
My name's Alan Cody, eleven one 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 one, and what I'm saying right now is not going to affect me, but it seems to me about ten years ago, we had a big problem in North Tiverton with the drainage. We were locking people up in jail or threatening them to go to jail. We were fining people for pumping water out in the streets and there's possibly a couple of people on the council that could remember that when that whole ordinance was taking place, it wasn't for pumping out your cellar trying to save your house, it was for pumping your washing machine out in the street. And here we are trying to arrest people and we find some people, I think it was up to $400, for a man trying to save his home. That's where we should be putting some of this money.
Steve, the drainage, uh, plan for Colonial Bracket, Robert Gray, is that pretty much complete?
I believe that there are plans more or less ready. Um, I, I can't say that they'd be ready in 120 days. You have to write bid proposals for all of these. And even going back to the Stone Bridge, the, the DEM permitting process would require construction plans to be ready, to be sent to them, to be reviewed and approved. You know, a turnaround of 120 days for anything on, on the coast or dumping into the coast, you, you're backed up to the state in the permitting process. But Robert Gray, I believe, is in pretty good shape. It's a project that possibly could, could get done. I'll have to review that, though, to see just how far along we are with that, that-
Yeah, Steve, we received a drainage report-
Right.
Probably two years ago.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I don't think we ever went out for specs. I, I know we didn't.
I, I don't believe that it's, it's gone that far.
Exactly. And yet the drainage report was, um, it was a good report, but it required the expenditure, a fair amount of money, which we didn't really have. But I, I think we're not at, we're not at the spec stage.
Yeah, I, I don't, I haven't seen plans and specs for that area. You're right, there was a, there was a report done-
Yep.
Uh, with recommendations, and it would, it'd take a considerable effort to, to put a P S and E, plans, specs, and estimates together in order to go out as a bidding, as a bidding document. And even with the sewer projects, they are going to have to put a bidding document together to hit the streets, get it out to bid, get it awarded. I mean, getting shovels in the ground in 120 days is, is going to take a considerable effort on any project. And, and some of them require upfront costs, you know, with, with designers or, or someone to put these projects together. I feel with the sewer projects in the north end, that's kind of doable. That's been taken to an extreme where we have plans and specifications, so putting a bidding document together i- is, is feasible, but Stone Bridge with, involving DEM, killer.
Well, right, it's not DEM, it'd be C R M C.
Oh, C R, yeah, which is probably even worse, but in any case, you're right, you're right. But, um, you know, I'll put a list together, but, you know, a lot of projects, if you, if you're, if you're recommending them now, surveys have to be done. I mean, it's a considerable effort and it's going to be very difficult to meet that 120-day-
Oh, I know, we're just trying to have something ready that if someone asks us what we have, that-
Sure.
We're going to be able to at least make some proposals and see which ones can get there. You know, the ones that, the ones that are shovel-ready today, probably going to get the money right away, but I mean, the way I'm hearing the stimulus, it's going to go more into some, it's not something that's going to end in, in 60 or 120 days.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, when you're talking about the millions of jobs they're trying to create, they're going to have to involve a lot of projects and a lot of projects that are on the drawing board, you know, that'll keep this, you know, pipeline going. So, I just think we need to prepare ourselves for what projects that, you know, we truly have been, you know, scraping for, for years now. Stone Bridge is one of those that we've been scraping for years. As Alex says, the, the drainage issues in, in North Tiverton, you know, you still see it. You're still sending sand trucks out, you know, at night, almost every night now, when we get our cold weather, and the sump pumps are still coming on. You know, we haven't been finding anybody or anything recently, but, you know, we get a five or six day cold snap and we'll start see that ice building up, you know, to significant levels again, and we're going to be back because they say this is probably the worst it's been in five or six years. And five or six years ago, that's the kind of stuff we were facing.
Certainly.
So, those drainage issues, I mean, we, we still have to have that and many other projects we have that, you know, may fall in line with this, because I think we, we definitely better be prepared.
Okay.
Could I make the suggestion also, Mr. President, that I would hope that the department heads would think outside the box. I think the, the intent of Obama's plan is to create more jobs. We already have these jobs that'll repair, service and so forth, we just need the money to proceed. But I think we'd be more successful, and we may need to, based on the criteria that will come along with these grants, uh, funding, we may need to identify what new jobs are going to be created and so forth, so we need some of those projects to be prepared also. And they may not need the specifications and, and the design drawings and so forth, uh, that would be necessary to implement those kinds of projects. So, like I say, I think we should think outside the box.
Mr. President, just, just to close the loop, earlier I'd referred to in, in council jargon, um, in terms of agenda item A three J, and for those folks and for the TV audience that does not have access to our packets, the Rhode Island Department of Transportation has recommended two projects for Tiverton. One of them, the interim repairs to the Secana River Bridge, which they indicate is ready for advertisement and ready for construction in 2009 for 2.22 million. And then the other item, the other project they list is the-
Repair.
Repair of Route 138 from Souza Road to the Mass State Line, and that's 2.85 million dollars, and they have a target construction well beyond the 120 days, but in 2010. Um, I'm, I think those would benefit the town, particularly the, the repairs from Souza Road to the State Line.
Mr. Lambert, do you have anything further on that, or you, uh?
No, I, I just wanted to clarify it and that we're essentially sending out, I think, a message to anybody in town. If you have a good idea, submit it, get it to Mrs. Mello or get it to Mr. Goncalo. And hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we can have a, a substantial list.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, well, Mr. Lambert, resolution to the General Assembly.
The only ones I'm, I'm raising tonight for discussion are 3A and 3B. Uh, for those who don't have the agenda in front of them, I've requested a discussion on a possible resolution to the General Assembly, essentially meaning a resolution to the members, our local members to the General Assembly, requesting two items. A, reduction in compensation for all members of the General Assembly, and B, elimination of health care benefits for General Assembly members, or a reduction in those benefits. Again, it goes, I know that there's a tremendous amount of legislation presently before the General Assembly. A lot of people are being asked to make sacrifices. Uh, I think the General Assembly can step up and make some sacrifices. Unlike the argument raised by Ms. Durfee, which was a, a very good one as to the local politics, the most, it seems to me, most people in the General Assembly have more than enough backing, enough assets. And as I view it, in any event, it's a volunteer position, and with respect to any type of health care benefits, I don't see any rational relationship between being on a General Assembly, being in the General Assembly, and having health care benefits. Uh, it's a part-time job, nobody forced these people to run for that office, and they should probably have a full-time job somewhere that does provide health care benefits. But the only point I'm making at this point is, if there's going to be pain, and members of the General Assembly are going to be voting on who gets the pain, let them join in with the rest of us.
We also have a request, I believe, by, by Mr. DePalmer and our correspondent, that he'd like to meet with us, to talk to us about any proposals we might have to place before the General Assembly.
Yeah. Um, uh, I hate to argue with you, but I must. Do you know how the compensation of the General Assembly is set?
No, but they know what it is going in.
No, but do you know how it's set?
No.
It's set by the Constitution of Rhode Island. And do you know why?
In the exact dollar amounts?
Yes.
I can just imagine why.
Well, no, I don't think you know the history of this. Do you?
Well, if we can't reduce-
We can with a constitutional convention.
Can we reduce-
Health care.
Benefits, health care benefits.
That is also provided by the Constitution. So, I wouldn't want the town to look stupid and-
That's, that's why we have legal counsel.
Okay. But there's a history to that, that I really think you should be aware of, okay? I mean, I'm, and that is this, that in the early 90s, in the late 80s, and Andrew, you can, you can correct me on this, but there was an explosion in the state with regard to abusive pension deals by legislators, okay? And there was a coming together of a number of reform, reform groups under an umbrella organization. And I can't recall the name of that, but I do know that Alan Hassanfeld, uh, uh, was the chairman of that. And it brought together Common Cause and all the reformers who were outraged. And as part of that constitutional convention, it was determined that they would not any longer legislators participate in the pension program. And they set the pay at 10,000 plus a cost of living. It was a trade-off to get rid of the pension abuses. So, that is, and they have no actual control. They can't increase their pay or, or, or whatever.
For, for several decades, the pay was $5 per day-
Yes.
With a maximum of 60 days service, so 300 a year was the maximum. So, but they all had sweetheart, they all had health care fully funded and sweetheart pension deals.
Yeah.
And the constitutional convention was a trade-off. And in fact, the ones, the ones in office at the time were allowed to choose whether they would go with the new system-
Yes, and that is retained.
Or whether they'd stay. And there were about 10 or 20 that stayed and finished out their time at $300 a day so that they could keep their lucrative pension deals, $300 a year, they could keep the lucrative pension deals that they had put through. But now everybody up there is subject to that new requirement.
And that would apply to health care benefits as well? What percentage they pay in co-pay, if anything?
That is, what they pay is, is, is a voluntary thing. That, all it says is the constitutional provision is Article 6.3, if you want to look at it sometime in your spare time. Um, I think it's Article 6, Section 3. Don't hold me, but I, that's what I recall. But many of them voluntarily contribute now. And then every now and then, the Journal comes out and says, okay, here are the legislators. I believe all our legislators in Tiverton and, you know, Representative Loughlin, Senator Phalag, and I suspect Edwards. I, I don't know that, but they published a list of who was voluntary contributing 20, 25 percent. So, uh-
And I'm not knocking any of them, and I'm not knocking our local legislators. It's just this idea that we're going to be asking for an awful lot of sacrifices by people. And I'd like to see the people who are making some of these decisions also be making a sacrifice, even if they have to come up with the option themselves. Tell us some legal way you can make a sacrifice.
Well, I will only add one more thing to you, is that we're going to be dealing probably with our local legislators in connection with relief from mandates. And, um, and I would anticipate that if, that we'll be hearings on the budget, some of us may wish to testify. You may wish to testify in regard to that. But I just wanted to point that out, because if we went ahead with a resolution of that type, I'm afraid they would look at us and say, Tiverton, you know what you're doing.
That's why we have legal counsel.
Okay.
And I, I, I join in your motion to table it then until we have an opportunity to talk to some of our local members of the General Assembly.
I think that's a better approach.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, announcements, comments, and questions?
Motion to table on that?
Oh, we, we didn't. Is there a motion to table on, uh, the request of Mr. Lambert?
Well, I'm, you'd make a motion to table it, too? I'll second that, his motion to table until we talk to our legislators.
Motion made and seconded to table till after conversation with the local legislators. All those in favor? Town Administrator, announcements, comments, questions?
Uh, the first announcement is there will be a large metal pickup on January the 17th, and anyone interested in having articles to be picked up may call the Public Works Department starting on January the 12th. Um, I'd also like to recognize Lieutenant Mark Reimels, who was selected to represent the local EMS providers during a two-day conference in Arlington, Virginia. Uh, he, this relates to Homeland Security. He went on his own time, and the expenses were being paid by the Homeland Security, so I'd, I'd like to recognize him on his selection. The next item. The Chamber of Commerce has submitted a SEDS application on our behalf. The, uh, that is Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. The application went to statewide planning. It was in the amount of $975,000. It will be reviewed and decided on January 15th. The application was for the industrial park infrastructure, for example, sewer and gas extensions. Uh, if it's approved, it will most likely be forwarded to the U.S. EDA, and at that time, any amounts that we have can be redefined. Uh, there was a second application submitted on our behalf to the Rhode Island EDA for $150,000, and that was for the utility design obtained cost estimates and a master plan for the industrial park. And I will keep you posted as to any developments on those. Thank you.
The council announcement, comments? Okay, town solicitor?
Okay, um, I have a couple of items. Um, first of all, K1 is just a copy of the Making Good Land Use Decisions Program application that we talked about a week ago from Grow Smart Rhode Island, which will be held here in Tiverton on three Thursdays, January 22nd, the 29th, and the 12th. Um, my understanding is that the Planning Board has money in their budget allocated for training. Um, I'm not sure about the Zoning Board. I know we had talked about, perhaps other members who were here last week might want to be involved in this more in-depth training. Um, so I was going to ask the council if the council would be willing to authorize the payment of the, there is a fee of $90, which covers the materials and the meal. They, they pay people so that they can start at 5:30 and get going right at 6 o'clock. It's one way they keep things moving in an orderly fashion. If the council would be willing to fund attendance from the town out of its contingency if there were other town board commission members who otherwise didn't have the money in their budget, and also for council members, although perhaps council members will be using their stipend for it. But at least for non-council members, I was, I, I did represent to Grow Smart that I would make that request, and I think it's a worthwhile-
And the cost is $90?
$90.
Covering?
Covering everything. Covers the materials, covers the meal.
Covers everybody?
No, per person.
One person.
Per person, yes.
Well, that shoots that stipend for the month.
And that's for all three sessions?
That's for all three sessions, right. So, it's $30 a session, but you, you sign up for the whole thing.
And I would, I would say, you know, that, an unsolicited endorsement, if I may, uh, I've, I've gone to one in, a series in the past that was held over in Middletown a couple of years ago. And they're, they're good programs. They have good topics, they have good speakers, and as one who attends far more conferences than I would like, they're good conferences in terms of they're to the point and they keep it moving. And when they say they're going to be done, they're done, you know, which is not always the easiest thing to do. So, if you have an interest in good land use decision-making, I would, I would recommend the, the expenditure.
Who, who do we have in mind to send to this, other than the members of the Planning Board?
The Zoning Board, you might have the Conservation Commission, um, council members. Those are right off the bat. Um, I don't know. Chris, any other suggestions?
No, I have, it will be at the Judson Community Center.
Okay, all right. They, it says location to be determined, and Chris has just indicated will be the Judson Community Center where it will be.
I hope we're renting it to them.
They, they don't, they don't make money on it, so that's part of the thing. We have to provide, we provide the space.
So, we don't know how many people, but this would be an authorization. If we had 10 people-
Yes.
It would be $900.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize up to $900, so, you know, for expenditure for those that wish to undertake these courses.
Okay. Presume we had a first-come, first-served basis, so that there's some way to, for, for those that don't otherwise have the money authorized in their budget?
Exactly.
Okay.
Hopefully, it will not all be, out of the town council contingency.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Next, next item, K2, is just a copy of the decision from the Office of the Attorney General. This came out just before Christmas, was kind of lost and all the other stuff that was going on. I just wanted to provide you an official copy and just, um, as, as you're aware, the Attorney General did find a violation of the Open Meeting Act in the way the meeting was advertised with the charter amendments. Um, we were kind of caught between specificity and vagueness. If we had been a bit more vague and just said discussion of charter amendments, we would have been okay. Um, but we specified some by counselor and we left off one, and there should have been a motion to add that to the agenda. Um, it's basically a no harm, no foul. All of that was sent to the public hearing, which had even more advertisement than was otherwise necessary in the paper, and then it went to the vote at the gen, at the election, at the general election, and that item didn't pass, so it didn't really matter anyway. Um, but it, and, and the reason it was first advertised that way, we were all pressured. The time limit, statutory time limit was running out on the Charter Commission. Everything was rushing forward, but we just have to make sure, I think, all of us, myself included, as we're going on, forward on these things, sometimes we need to stop and say, okay, can we add this to the agenda? And then if so, let's add it to the agenda formally rather than just picking up the discussion. If you had any questions on it. Otherwise, K3, this was requested. This is regarding the charter. Um, I have drafted a resolution of the council requesting our General Assembly representatives to submit this, and then I drafted the actual proposed legislation that we would attach with our charter, asking the General Assembly to ratify it. So, I would ask for a vote of the council approving this resolution.
I would make that motion.
I would second it. We have a motion and a second to approve the, the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
And finally, the, the last item is just a, a public update on the Bay Street situation, Carvello, the New England Gas. Um, I do have to remind, everybody have to remind the council and, and explain to the public that we're still limited on what we can say publicly because Judge Torres's order, which unsealed all of the settlement discussions between the plaintiffs, the individual homeowners, and Southern Union, um, it said explicitly that the settlement discussions between the town and Southern Union, which did not come to fruition, those were still protected and could not be disclosed. So, we can't discuss any of the particulars there. Um, in general, we are still trying to keep the door open to negotiations. Um, and in particular, I joined with the plaintiffs' counsel in requesting the court for a new status conference to keep things moving. The federal court, the case has now been assigned to Judge Smith. He is the one who is handling the case with the recusal and retirement of Judge Torres. Um, and whether it's coincidence or not on the timing, but there has been, there was just last week a notice posted, there is a status conference on January 22nd at 9:00 a.m. That's January 22nd at 9:00 a.m. Judge Smith has noticed everybody, including Tiverton and all the other third-party defendants, for a status conference. Um, it says courtroom two, so I anticipate that it's a public conference. I obviously am not sure of that. It could end up being closed at the time. Um, but that's where we are status-wise, and we, I have communicated to Southern Union our willingness to continue discussing things with them. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next word of business is executive session.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss litigation pursuant to 42465 subsection A two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
And to continue in executive session pursuant to 42465A5, discussing the possible acquisition or disposition of town-held property.
Second.
All those in favor?
And to remain in executive session pursuant to 42465A2 on collective bargaining.
Second.
All those in favor? We're now in executive session.